Welcome to the Municipalia South Dundas Regular Council Meeting with its team for Monday, November 28, 2022. This is our first meeting. Thank you for joining us. Item number one, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Second item, we will have confirmation of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or amendments? Seeing none, we'll move to item three. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we'll move to item four, adoption of the minutes. Is there any discussion, errors, or omissions in the minutes for the meeting of November 1, 2022? Seeing none, I have a motion that the minutes of the 133rd meeting of council be adopted as circulated. Do I have a mover? Councillor Ward, Secundar, Councillor Vino. All that's heard the motion in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5A, delegations. And tonight, we have Ben DeHaan here with the SD&amp;G Counties. He's the Director of Transportation. He's going to share with us the Regional Waste Management Executive Summary and Action Plan. Welcome, Ben.
Thank you, and quite an honor to be here for the first meeting. So I really appreciate that. So tonight, what I'm here to talk with council about, okay, good, that's moving along, is the regional waste management plan and the report that we've created. And really, I'm going to just hold this up. I don't know where the cameras are, but holding this up for the cameras. So we've created a pretty comprehensive report, and I like to think of it as the buffet. And what we're asking council tonight to endorse and support and work, continue to work with other municipalities on is, we'll call it course number one of that buffet. Ultimately, what we want to do is, and as I'll describe a little bit in my presentation, is, you know, we've created a couple of action items that we think are very manageable and ways that we can continue to move this file forward. And really, for me, and I think for the people at a staff level that have worked on this, is representing the next steps in terms of what we want to do to continue to collaborate and work together to move regional waste management initiatives, opportunities forward across SD&amp;G. So it's been a very long and challenging project, particularly as it's something that the counties has been working on with the local municipalities through the pandemic, and that certainly created some challenges just with, you know, abilities and, you know, where focuses have changed because of the pandemic. But, you know, I really appreciate all the work that all the local staff have put into this to get to this point. It was no easy task, for sure, and, you know, I'm just one little piece of the big puzzle. And really, what that report did describe is there's lots of opportunities in that buffet, but all have differing challenges and mean different priorities to different municipalities, depending on where they are with their waste management locally. So what we did is, we've, through this project, we've had a steering group that's tried to work with the consultant or has been working with the consultant to get to this point. The steering group, as it stands right now, it includes Tim Wright from North Glengarry, Public Works Director of North Glengarry, and Sarah McDonald from South Glengarry, again, Public Works Director there. We have circulated the report that's attached in council's agenda tonight to all the local municipalities at a staff level, and there seems to have been really good buy-in and support for what the executive summary and action plan contains. It has been supported by County Council. That was done in October 2022. And here I am today looking for local council support. And this is visit number two of the six local councils. And I'm, you know, expecting, hoping that locally, we get that support and we can continue to move forward. From a very high level, what the executive summary provides is a very quick snapshot of the differing levels of service across all the local municipalities within Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry. The intention there, and this is actually one of the first times we've done this collectively, is work together and get that information out there and shared with each other in terms of who's doing what and why they're doing it. So I'm not going to spend too much time on some of these things. It's in council's reports and certainly going to be coming back to you, I think, on a more frequent basis so that you have the opportunity to input, discuss, you know, compare yourselves and look at what you're doing, what, you know, what areas you maybe want to work towards with other municipalities. From a highlight perspective, again, I won't spend too much time here, but there is, I think this is one of the biggest, maybe the biggest challenges, perhaps "challenges" isn't the right word, but biggest differences between the local municipalities. Some municipalities are in, we'll call it like a precarious spot with their local landfills in terms of what are we going to do next. Some municipalities do have some capacity. Our neighbors to the north in North Dundas, you know, they're really hoping to get an expansion approved. They've been at capacity in this expansion they've been looking for. I think since our time working on this report has been coming next week. So maybe it's going to be next week for them. So I hope so. But that, I think, is the big challenge, is that this, you know, looking at landfills in particular, it's not something that you can just say, "We need to build a new landfill," and it happens tomorrow. This is like a multi, multi, multi-year process to get approvals for expansions, and not only expansions, but new ones. And I think this is, you know, kind of collectively, if you step back, this is one of the biggest challenges, I think, we all face within SD&amp;G in terms of what do we do next. One of the, and certainly, I think, one of the big findings and opportunities that is out there is the opportunity to work together and look at, is there a possibility to work, you know, collaboratively as an organization, as a region, and meet with the Eastern Ontario Waste Handling Facility in Moose Creek? We're very, very fortunate here in Eastern Ontario to have such a facility close by because that's not something that's out there very, there's not a lot of those opportunities in Ontario. And having that at our doorstep does provide some real good opportunities. And it is something, I think, collectively as local municipalities, we've all identified as, yeah, there's a place we can work together. And perhaps, you know, if we go in as a collective group and talk to the folks at the Eastern Ontario Waste Handling Facility, maybe there is some, something that we can all benefit from. And similarly, the City of Cornwall is in a similar position where they're looking ahead to the end of their landfill and kind of what to do next. And if you look geographically at the City of Cornwall, they're, you know, they're confined by their geographic city boundaries, and there isn't a lot of space left in that boundary to expand or to create a new landfill. So they're in the same boat as we are, and we think that there's some real opportunities to work with the city on that. So very quickly, I'll just get to the recommendations that we've prepared in our executive summary. Recommendation number one, and to me, this is the most important recommendation that we put out there for everyone, is the commitment to create a formal regional waste management working group. And we're looking for that commitment from the six local municipality. What it means for South Dundas is we're looking for South Dundas's support to, you know, identify and have a local staff representative actively participating and reporting back to you as a council. We, as a county, are, you know, suggesting, depending on how that group wants to work, we can play an active role, a passive role in that group. For me, it doesn't matter. I really, you know, I think I believe firmly in this. County Council has supported the concept of staff playing an active role in that group, but it really kind of depends on how that group functions and operates. But ultimately, what we want to do is have a terms of reference, you know, have a rotating chair across the six local municipalities, identify the goals, activities, and things they want to work on from the big buffet. And that gives us that opportunity to invite the City of Cornwall as a collective group. City of Ottawa has also expressed interest in working with us on certain things. And Leeds and Grenville is another place where I know you're, you know, you share a border with Leeds and Grenville, and perhaps there's some opportunities to work with our friends to the west and participate in one way or another. And it doesn't mean that what works for South Dundas is going to work for North Glengarry, but I think it's very important that we have these conversations and figure out, okay, where can it work between all of our local municipalities, and where can it work where we look outside of our boundaries and work with others that are in the same boat. Recommendation number two is focusing efforts on the collaborative transition strategy during the IPR transition. And that's rather than participating as a collector or a contractor in that program. I won't get too much into that, into what it means, but I guess maybe putting it on council's radar as a new council and as a first meeting. It's a big, it's a big topic to jump into in the first meeting. But essentially, the blue box program is changing, essentially, like fundamentally in Ontario. I think the intention of it is very good in terms of, we're trying to create that circular economy and make the people that are producing the waste responsible for how to dispose the waste. And that's really what it comes down to, is taking blue box out of municipal hands and making the producers responsible to collect and recycle what they're putting into the market. And that's a great thing, and I think that that's something that, you know, think of the LCBO, it's that kind of mentality where there's a way that these, they're going to try and collect back these plastic containers that they're putting out there. It's a good thing, but it also means change. And change is very difficult because people are used to a certain level of service, used to a certain way things are happening. And we, I think, as a region, need to come together and figure out, how do we need to communicate out to our residents how this is going to change? We have to be part of that communication strategy. So I think, you know, as a group, we have that opportunity to talk together, to be able to create common communication plans, to see what's happening. We are a region that's going to be transitioning at the end of this phase in. We can take the lessons learned from the ones that are transitioning in 2023 and apply those, you know, what worked and what didn't work to our region. But we need to work together on that. And that's what recommendation two is all about, is committing to that idea of working together and figuring out a way to make sure we transition to that, to that new world in a way that works for our residents. Number three is annually reporting accurate financial data to the working group. And what we're hoping for here is, you know, it's been a great exercise to be able to compare our costs across each of the local municipalities, see what's working, what's not working. And I think for that to continue to have success, we need to make sure we're having and inputting that, that accurate data into the group. Because that's going to help us, just again, making sure we're relevant, we're up to date in terms of what everybody's doing and how much it's costing to provide these services. Recommendation number four is what we're calling adopting a regional base level of service. And I guess the caution I want to put out here on this one is, this is not suggesting that we should all, you know, this is the new level of service we should be providing to our residents. Rather, we should identify as a region a benchmark. And that's the way to think of this. This is just a benchmark. And the idea behind that is if we agree on what the benchmark is, then if we are working together and, let's say, we decide South Dundas and North Dundas want to jointly work together on a collection tender and have a joint collection tender. If North Dundas has a three-bag limit and South Dundas has a two-bag limit, well, if we've agreed on what that benchmark is, then we can make sure we're properly attributing cost to each, like to whomever is above or below that benchmark. So it's just a way to compare ourselves, a way to make sure things are fair as we start to work together. So that's the idea behind having a regional benchmark. So just in conclusion, it's been a challenging task to get to this point. We've put a lot of years of work into this, and I'm really proud of what we have. And I think we've got a really good roadmap to continue to move forward. To me, just creating this formal working group and having that staff member who sits on behalf of South Dundas, coming back to council, regular reporting on what we're doing, you know, providing some feedback, updates, successes, even failures, I think is a good thing. And, you know, I really appreciate the local staff who have helped and who are sitting on that steering group right now. That's Sarah and Tim. And Ross, who is soon retiring, has been an active member through most, if not all, of this project, and appreciate his help as well. And in terms of next steps, so I'm presenting this to all the local councils, saying essentially the same thing, just, yeah, pretty much the same thing to everybody. With all of the local councils endorsing it, it'll be creating a terms of reference, getting that group together. And then from there, it'll be coming back to you regularly and hopefully giving you the feedback and information you need as a council to make informed decisions about waste management in your municipality. So with that, I'm done.
Great. Well.
Hopefully, that was an amazing first delegation.
Awesome. Cut us off on the right place. Well, thank you, Mr. DeHaan. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thanks a lot, Ben. We have you back on the agenda, kind of, for item 6C. So we'll, more to come on that tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to item 5B. We have Foodcycler is going to do a presentation to us tonight, and we are going to bring them in on Zoom. And we have Christina Zardo with us. May it take a second for everyone to link up here.
Good evening, everyone. Are you able to see me?
Yes, we can.
Hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
All right, wonderful. Thank you very much, Mayor, council, staff, and any members of the public who are tuning in. Appreciate being the second delegation of this new team. And my name's Christine Azardo. I'm here on behalf of Food Cycle Science to provide you with an overview of a program that we ran earlier this year regarding food waste diversion. So remaining on topic from the last delegation. I'm just going to share my screen so I can share a presentation with you. Are you able to confirm that you can see what I have up there?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. All right. So for any new faces in the room or anyone in the public who hasn't been tuning in, I'll tell you a little bit about Food Cycle Science. We're a Canadian company. We're based out of Ottawa, just down the road. Founded in Cornwall in 2011, and we're completely focused on providing food waste diversion solutions. And we do that using our technology called the Foodcycler. So you may have heard of this. We do sell it to consumers through companies such as Vitamix. And we also provide solutions to municipalities to keep food waste out of landfills. A couple things to highlight here is we are finalist in Impact Canada's Food Waste Reduction Challenge, which is a federal challenge to keep food waste out of Canadian landfills for which there's federal funding. And we're on Golden Mail's top-growing companies for the last two years. And we have partnerships with 42 municipalities across Canada currently using Foodcycler technology. Now, when South Dundas signed on to the Foodcycler program, you were just the 14th community to pilot the solution in Canada and the world. And so we want to acknowledge and thank you for your willingness to trial an innovative solution to the longstanding problem that is food waste. So I'll just provide a brief recap of the program. We ran a program with 100 households participating and a pilot using the Foodcycler to divert their food waste. The net cost to the municipality was $10,000. The program ran for three months, from February till May. And during that time, users tracked how many times they ran the Foodcycler to calculate diversion. And then we administered a survey, and I'll be presenting you with the results of that survey data. And before I move on, I just want to acknowledge that the program was supported by Tia, who did a really wonderful job, and we thank her so much. So out of the 100 participating households, we did receive 88 responses to the survey, which is a fantastic response rate. So we feel that the data being represented here is a good sample and representative of what we're seeing through this program. Now, we asked folks how important greenhouse gas reduction was to them, and they said it was important to them on a scale of 8.7 out of 10. And similarly, waste reduction was important to them on a scale of 9.4 out of 10. So these two things are really important for members of your community. When we asked them whether food waste went prior to using the Foodcycler, about half of people said that it went into the garbage. We did have a number of people who said they were using composting. However, a lot of them said that it was a seasonal endeavor. So in the winter months, they weren't using it. And when we asked for anybody who did not compost, why that was, folks said that they were concerned about wildlife, pests, and odors, along with other things such as, you know, it's too physically demanding, not able to, I don't have space, et cetera. Now, when we tracked the number of times that cycles were run, so the number of times you basically press the button to run a batch of food waste in the Foodcycler, the average was about four times a week, and that's equivalent to 208 kilograms per year per household being diverted. So over the 100 households using Foodcyclers, we were able to divert 21 metric tons. And that's equivalent to about 42 metric tonne of CO2 equivalent compared to keeping food waste in the landfill. Now, we think that food waste diversion might be a little bit higher because of the seasonality that goes with food waste generation. But overall, these are very good statistics. And based on some of the numbers I saw in the last presentation, if every household in South Dundas used a Foodcycler, we could eliminate 20% of the tonnage going into landfills. Now, when we asked people, did increased awareness of food waste from using the Foodcycler motivate you to waste less food? 70% of people said yes. So this is some kind of qualitative data versus quantitative data that comes with being intimate with how much food waste you're generating in the first place, and having people say, you know, maybe I don't need to buy that three-pack of peppers. Maybe I just need one because I'm putting a lot of my leftovers or unused food waste in there. Now, when we said, using your best estimate, how much did you reduce your monthly garbage production as a result of diverting your food waste? 73% reported a notable reduction of monthly waste generation to the tune of one to two or even more than three bags. Now, the Foodcycler is an electric appliance, so it does use a little bit of electricity. So when we asked folks, did you see an increase in your electricity bill from using the Foodcycler? Only 2% of people said yes, and the rest said either no or not sure. So what that suggests is that increased electricity costs are either negligible or acceptable. Now, when we asked if the municipality were to offer a Foodcycler through a program from the municipality at no cost, do you think your friends, family, and neighbors would participate? 70% of people said yes, and 27% of people said they were not quite sure, with 3% of people saying no. And despite that kind of hesitancy of, I'm not sure if they would, when we asked if they would recommend the Foodcycler to others, 93% of users said they would, and only 1% said they would not. Now, when we asked, was the Foodcycler big enough for the amount of food waste that you generate daily? 60% of people said that it was sufficient, and 40% of people said, I just wish it were a little bit bigger. So a couple things that we can do to help with that is to get a spare bucket to essentially double your capacity, or to consider a new model that we have coming out next month, which has doubled the capacity with a five-liter bucket versus two and a half liters that exist today. Now, here's a good one. When we asked, after using the Foodcycler for three months, will you continue to use it? 99% of people said, yes, this works for me. I'm going to keep using the Foodcycler. And one person said that they would not. And overall, when we asked them to rate the pilot experience out of five stars, the average rating here was Now, we asked if a municipal program was not available, would you consider purchasing a Foodcycler? Many people said that the $150 price point that we established was good for them, and they would be willing to pay that again, with a couple people saying that they would pay a little bit more, even full retail price. So what this shows to us is that the price that we set was well-received by the municipality, by the residents of the municipality, and would be successful if duplicated. So in there, we asked people if they wanted to provide any comments about the program. They could just enter some text, and we had some really positive comments. So I have a few up on the screen here. I won't read through all of them, but overall, there was an overwhelming sentiment that residents were really grateful to the municipality for trialing an innovative solution to food waste. You know, great job on the part of the municipality for this program. Loved it. It was easy to use, not messy. This will be great for me in the winter, all that kind of stuff. So I have a couple things in here, and they're all in the agenda, so you can read through them. I won't waste your time just now. Now, in terms of next steps, to kind of keep with the momentum of this program, some things that we could consider are an expanded program. Now, that could mean, you know, another round of a pilot, perhaps incorporating the new Maestro technology that has doubled the capacity. We would love to work with your staff on a program designed specifically for you based on, you know, your needs, your budget. And I will just point out that there has been some discussion and interest in a collaborative program with South Stormont and South Glengarry, who also did a Foodcycler pilot program with very similar successful results. And lastly, what I'll mention is that we have another round of federal funding available from Impact Canada, as we were selected as finalist just a couple months ago. And South Dundas has first writ of refusal over this funding and how it's allocated. And so any expansion programs would be eligible to participate in this funding opportunity with a deadline of April 2023 for a commitment, not exactly a program, but we would incorporate any investment from Impact Canada into these future programs. So that's all I have for you today. Thank you very much for having me. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer them anytime.
Thanks, Christina. And thanks, Tia, for collecting the data and helping out with that. Do we have any questions of Christina? Well, I'd like to thank Christina. Thank you for joining us. Excellent presentation. I think certainly things, when it comes to landfills, our topics are tonight, we will definitely be moving forward on lots of different options and thoughts. So I think we would like to, having heard the delegation tonight, I would ask staff to follow up with the report and create data for our 2023 budget considerations.
Thank you very much.
So we'll move ahead to the next steps.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Christina. Okay, excellent. Moving on to our item six, our action requests. So first up is signing authorities for banking. Lachlan McDonald has put forward a recommendation, and I have that motion here. The motion is, the mayor, deputy mayor, treasurer, and deputy treasurer be appointed as signing officers for the municipality of South Dundas for the 2022-2026 Terms of Council. Do I have a motioner for this? Councillor Ward, Secundar, Councillor Smith. Do we have any, Lachlan is here. Do we have any questions for Lachlan? Having heard the motion and seeing the recommendation in the agenda, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Lachlan. Moving to item 6B, our municipal election accessibility report. The information is in the agenda package as filed by Clerk Leslie Drennan. Any comments to add, Leslie?
No, no comments further to the report, Mr. Ryan.
Any questions for our clerk on the report? Seeing none, I have a motion that the council of the municipality of South Dundas accept report 2022-10. Sorry.
You would ask for questions, but it's not about comments.
Oh, yeah. Yes, certainly. Go ahead. Sorry about that.
Yeah, just, no, it's okay. Thank you through you, Mayor Broad. One of the things that came up as kind of questions and comments for the election was they just, some people felt there wasn't enough personal ballots the day of, and they would like to see if we can increase into various locations, you know, Matilda Hall or Ercle or Dunbar. So I think that that's kind of important. And just look at reviewing the numbers, and it's hard to tell with only 45%, but it did appear that, or the report does say that, you know, the online voting was higher than the in-person. Maybe that's a reason, is because people are looking for a little bit more expanded in-person the day of.
Excellent. And we have some feedback. We're going to capture on item 9B from resident as well, so we can add on to that at that time, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep. So we have the motion. I'll repeat the motion. That the council of the municipality of South Dundas accept report CS 2022-10 to approve the post-municipal election accessibility report. Does somebody make the motion? Deputy Mayor St. Pierre, Secundar, Councillor Vino. Having heard the motion, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carried? Item 6C. Mr. DeHaan was here earlier with the delegation. Having heard the delegation on the regional waste management cooperation roadmap he prepared, I think it's great that we involve all our neighbors, and we certainly should benchmark with Leeds and Grenville. So being there, direct neighbors to the west, that's great. So this council does need to deliver a long-term waste management plan. So this is good to see Foodcycler and this type of things happening. So really appreciate that. I have a motion here, that the council of the municipality of South Dundas endorse the actions identified in the executive summary of the Regional Waste Management Executive Summary, and that the CEO and his designate represent the municipality of South Dundas by participating as part of the regional waste management working group.
Could have comments?
Yes, yeah, sure.
Sorry. Through you, Mayor Broad. Just for Shannon, CAO, Shannon Garrity, on the IPR, could you expand what exactly that, a little bit more on what that exactly means to us? And I noticed that there was a date set of, I think it was the 2025 in the report. Can you just educate us, just because we're kind of getting new into... Can you just educate us, just because we're kind of getting new into this, just educate us that on the date, how that was set, and a little bit more expansion on the IPR, please, and what that means? Or if Mr. DeHaan wants to come back and expand, that'd be great.
So through you, Mayor Broad, to Deputy Mayor St. Pierre. So I believe it was about a year and a half ago, there was some discussions in regards to timelines to roll out the initiative. At that time, municipalities had the option to other roll into the program in 2024 or 2025. I believe at that time, we chose the 2025 to allow others to kind of roll into the program first, just so that we could kind of see how things progressed, any issues that we could adapt to when we kind of rolled it. So the whole role of it is that, right now, when it comes to our blueboxing program, we collect the blue box and we take it to the city of Cornwall, where we do get some revenue from the city of Cornwall to take that recycling. The whole point of this now is that the producers who are actually producing the blue box material, so your LCBOs, any of your commercial businesses, are going to be responsible for getting rid of it. So now it will not fall on the municipal residents. It's going to be now more on the users, or the, sorry, the producers of it. So I said, we're still trying to navigate through that right now, and I think this will be, as a regional waste management program, will help us through that process and look for some collaboration or some efficiencies that we can get out of this program.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other comments? I'll restate the motion. That the council of the municipality of South Dundas endorse the actions identified in the executive summary of the regional waste management executive summary, and that the CAO and his or her designate represent the municipality of South Dundas by participating in the part of the regional waste management working group. Does anyone make the motion? Counselor Vino, secondar, counselor Smith, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Which is carried? Thank you very much. Let me do agenda item seven A, establishment of our 2023 water rates. Deputy Treasurer Sean Mason is here to give us an overview. As the study was completed in April and endorsed by the council on October 11th. Welcome.
Thank your worship. Good evening. I do have, I assume everybody had read through the report and picked up on a couple of those big numbers that are in there. I do have some more big numbers that will kind of, kind of add context as to why we're looking at a four percent water increase over the next 20 years. In July of 2022, all Ontario municipalities were required to adopt a asset management plan for core assets. The South Dundas Asset Management Plan recommends annual water and wastewater budget contributions of 1.4 million and 1.1 million respectively. There is approximately $10.4 million in projected water capital expenditures and approximately $9.3 million in wastewater expenditures expected over the next 20 years. The best practice is to have target reserve balances for a capital funding at a minimum of five percent to a maximum of 10%. Water capital assets have an estimated replacement value of 105 million, which would then need reserve balances of 5.25 and 10, up to 10.5 million. Wastewater assets are estimated at 91 million, which would need reserve balances of 4.55 million and 9.5, 9.1 million. For context, as of today, the water reserve is 952,000. The Morrisburg wastewater reserve is 938,000, and the Iroquois reserve is 638,000. So we've got a bit of work to do there. These funding levels for water and wastewater could be achieved by 2032 and 2036 if these increases continue as recommended. The study does give consideration to the full costs associated with managing the water and wastewater systems over a 20-year period and the recovery of those costs through proposed rates and charges to the users. Those are some big numbers. Four percent is, I think, I think palatable for the next 20 years. Sounds like a long time, but when we're talking big numbers like that with steady contributions and any type of investment that we, and revenue that we could get from interest and so forth, it'll be, it'll be, we'll be in a better place and very possibly avoid any further borrowing.
Thank you, Deputy Treasurer. Questions?
Through you, Mayor Broad. I don't really have any questions. I mean, the numbers are the numbers. Unfortunately, it's the reality of our user base versus our needs, asset needs in terms of monthly, monthly operation and maintenance and whatnot. I mean, I think the key thing, and we focused on this during the election campaign, and it really is in here, is it's basically, we need growth. We need more users on this system. So although it's a four percent over 20 years, hopefully we can manage that a little bit better. And I'm not suggesting we're going to be doing, this council's going to be able to do this overnight or in the next year or two, but hopefully, you know, at some point over our term, we can increase the revenue base and provide maybe some water to friends to the north and perhaps friends to the east and work towards that. And I think that's, that's going to be, needs to be our goal over the next term, this term of council. Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
How much would the average consumer's water bill be going up with the four percent in 2023?
So through the chair to Counselor Smith, the annual increase for a single-family dwelling, assuming two cubic meters per month, would be $39 in Morrisburg and $44 in Iroquois. Or monthly would be $3 in Morrisburg, sorry, $3.26 in Morrisburg, $3.72 in Iroquois.
Any other questions? Comments? Thank you, Deputy Treasurer. I feel that the increases are fair, and they're going to support our projects going forward. And to Deputy Mayor St. Pierre's comments, every year, we'll look at the charts and what growth we have and other ways to offset it, then we can certainly consider how we continue along with the increases. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion. The bylaw number 2022-127, being a bylaw to amend Schedule B to the bylaw number 2017-58 to enact rules and regulations to inspect, install, replace, or alter water meters and regulated temperatures, including the penalties for offenses be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed. Does anyone want to make the motion? Counselor Ward, secondar, counselor Vino, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much. Item 7D, CEO Shannon Garrity, could you share your recommendation? We have the notes in the file, but can you share our recommendation, please?
Thank you, Mayor Broad. So this, this recommendation is in regards to the COVID vaccination policy that we introduced back in 2021. At that time, it was the direction of the Eastern Ontario Health Unit that a vaccination policy be put in place in your organization, mainly to protect the safety of your workers. Over time, as council will recall, is that there's been some measures put in place as far as vaccinations, as well as some other measures put into organizations, such as masking, staying at home if you're sick, hand sanitizer. So at this time, based on some discussions with local neighbors, as well as the direction from the Eastern Ontario Health Unit, we're looking at recommending that the vaccination policy be rescinded at this time, with, I think, the intent that if things do change or navigate over the next few months, that we would look at bringing some other options back to council at that time. But I think it should be made very clear that, you know, the direction has always been from the Eastern Ontario Health Unit, and we sit in on regular bi-monthly meetings and look for trends, and we'll continue to do that and report back to council on anything that changes.
Thank you. Any questions for CEO Garrity? Comments? Thank you. I think the highest risk is behind us, and the need for the vaccination policy in the municipality is no longer needed. We will keep safety at the forefront and revisit it anytime we need to. We keep having meetings with the health unit and Dr. Paul Romotas to ensure that the current recommendations are there. So this will standardize us with our other neighboring municipalities, townships, to ensure we can keep recruiting and retaining all our best employees. So I have a motion. But that motion, bylaw number 2022-128, being a bylaw to rescind bylaw 2021-111, authorizing council policy 3-29 COVID-19 vaccination verification be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed. Can I have someone to make the motion? Counselor Ward, seconded by St. Pierre, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carried. Thank you very much. Under item number eight, A through D, we have four consent items that have been received to council and staff, one being the Baitfield fishing tournament for 2023, our building planning bylaw statistics for October 2022, the hours for the Christmas closure of the municipal office for 2022, and our 2023 council meeting schedule. Any questions or comments on those consent agenda items? Seeing none, I have a motion that all items under general consent section of the agenda be adopted as presented. Can I have someone to make the motion? Counselor Vino, secondar, counselor Ward, all of, having heard the motion, all in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carried. Excellent. So moving forward, item nine on our agenda, the review of current committee structure and committees of council. So this is our time to discuss the terms of reference and the committees we currently have. In your agenda package, there are the nine, 10 different committees on the list. We, it's just an open discussion. We can start with, just at the top of the list and move forward and have comments on it, and then we can bring it together at the end. So one of our committees was the Carmen House Museum that has seven members, and it has, has been meeting a few times a year, which involves the Director of Recreation, the Director of Parks. Any comments or questions about the Carmen House Museum? Counselor Ward?
Mayor Broad, so I guess I just have a brief comment. I think it would be interesting to see if we could maybe, if I could make a comment, is that the Carmen House Museum Committee also maybe just represent the Historical Society of South Dundas, perhaps? We have quite a few historical things going on in South Dundas. The Forward Houses Committee is, they're a separate committee. They're not a committee of council, but they are doing good work, and I'd like to maybe have someone on that, sit on the committee. I'd like to incorporate all historical aspects of South Dundas rather than just the Carmen House. I don't know how the rest of council feels on that, but that's something that I, when reading through the terms of reference, would like to see if possible.
Right. Thank you, counselor. Any other comments? Okay, so as, as we go forward, we'll be, we'll be following up and looking, and then coming forward at our next meeting with the final recommendations. So that's good. The Committee of the Adjustment, as part of the Planning Act, the Planning Consultant and Building Planning Technician. The meetings are at the call of the chair. Any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor, St. Pierre?
Through you, Mayor Broad. My only comment on that committee is I always believed and still do that a council representative should be sitting on that committee. May not have voting privileges, but, you know, I think we can talk our way through that one a little bit. But I'm just a big proponent of council being in the know with that type, with the decisions that are being made. Because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, we get a lot of calls on, on various decisions and why decisions are being made, and at least that way we can be, you know, transparent right up front.
Right. Okay, yeah, we can certainly review those terms of reference and, and see what we can move forward with that suggestion. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Dundas County Archives. Staff resources are clerk, meets as necessary. This is a joint committee that represents all of Dundas County, so it includes North Dundas. Questions or comments? Okay. That one, we'll definitely continue on, and we'll just review the terms and reference and make sure we're up to, up to date. The Economic Development Advisory Committee meets quarterly, and involves the Economic Development Officer and the CAO. Questions or comments on their terms of reference and/or situation? Ask Counselor Ward.
Through you, Mayor Broad. If I may ask a question to the CAO. I was wondering, they were formed at the same time, so the Tourism Advisory Committee and the Economic Development Advisory Committee were formed, obviously, February 2019. Is there any benefit to them being separate, or would they benefit from being together? I realize their terms of reference are separate, but I'm just wondering, they seem to have similar representatives on both, so I'm just wondering, to be more efficient and convenient, if perhaps merging the two together might be an option?
Through you, Mayor Broad, to Counselor Ward. I did actually have a conversation with our Economic Development Officer today on that same option. Definitely, there is some synergies when it comes to economic development and tourism. They do fall under the Economic Development Office to begin with. So if council chooses to go down that road as, as far as putting them together, I don't see any issues as far as still coming with, you know, a core plan on how they're going to, because economic development and tourism go hand in hand. They're tied together. So I don't foresee any issue with, if that's the way that council wants to move forward.
Thank you.
Questions? Comments?
Through, through you, Mayor Broad. I know we're going to kind of wrap it up in a nice bow here at the end, but, you know, a couple of comments. You know, I'm just wondering, before we start making final decisions, if we're going to merge some committees or not merge committees or whatever. The interests of the committee, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't be having discussions with whomever has been the current chair of these committees to get some feedback from them on, on what their thoughts are on some of the suggested suggestions that we may be bringing forward.
Yeah, I would, I would say absolutely will, and that would be part of the process. I think kind of our attention tonight was for us to read the terms of reference, see if we had questions on those and just thoughts going into that, and we'll get that feedback and come back with that feedback from the, from the groups as well.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Through you and to you, I agree with you. I just, even with trying to absorb what some of the committees do, unless you've been involved with some of the committees, it's, it's a little bit hard to absorb exactly what we're getting back. I tried to go, or I did go back on some meeting minutes and try to absorb some of the stuff they're doing. It seems pretty straightforward, but, you know, I, I think it'd be a benefit to us to have that.
Okay. Okay, we'll continue now with the list. Do we have any questions for the, for the CEO, the deputy clerk that's here? We can answer those and, and, and/or questions that we want to get answered. Let's capture those as well, right? The Iroquois waterfront. Director of Parks and Recreation Facilities is the staff resource on that, and I think they meet quite often by the looks of their agendas and their meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Counselor Ward?
I guess I have a similar question. Thank you, Mayor, to the CAO again. Is, have we ever considered merging Iroquois waterfront and Morrisburg waterfront committees together? And if so, was there any feedback prior, or?
So through you, Mayor Broad, to Counselor Ward. It has been something that has been brought up over probably the last year, is as far as the waterfronts merging. To Deputy Mayor St. Pierre is maybe a conversation with the two chairs to see if there's some collaborations or some synergies there of joining forces. If you look at some of their projects over the last two years, they have a common theme. So they're kind of doing the same thing, and maybe together, there might be some more possibilities on stronger partnerships, funding, all that kind of things. But definitely something that maybe sitting down with the chairs and just getting an understanding.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Before the Morrisburg Downtown Business Improvement Association. I do know at the most recent meetings, they had renewed some of the members on that and were trying to really get that going again. Certainly the feedback, some of the feedbacks I've heard is that this, this group needs to, to get going and get, get really active would be really best, the best for them. And it was a question at the, at the councilors' meetings too, as well as brought forward, with the small businesses in each of the towns. So any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Broad. Just wondering, Morrisburg Downtown Business, what about Iroquois? Do they not have a business improvement?
Go ahead, Mr. Geirde.
Through you, Mayor Broad, to Deputy Mayor St. Pierre. So the Iroquois has an Iroquois down, or Iroquois Business Group. They're not under the municipal act when it comes to official BIA. So Morrisburg, we actually levy the businesses of Morrisburg in, on their taxes yearly, so they have a levy. Whereas Iroquois does not. They kind of do their own stuff internally with their businesses. Candice is the biggest spearhead around that. So it's something that Iroquois down the road could end up going under the municipal act and creating their own Iroquois BIA. But at this point, it's only Morrisburg at this time.
But they do have a business committee.
Yes, correct.
So I guess my, just wondering out loud a little bit if it, if it's worth approaching them to see if they'd be a benefit. Although I would, I would look at that as some of the other committees, just for a council member to sit on it, to be able to, again, interact, to be able to be involved, to be able to bring back initiatives that, that, that they're looking forward to. Just, again, just a question. Oh, sorry.
I gave you the okay.
Just the one thing I want is we did have a strategic planning session with the Morrisburg BIA back in the summertime. One of the actual recommendations was that for them was to collaborate with the Iroquois Business Group. Because, you know, there's events that are being planned, is let's get together and plan them together. There's some opportunities as far as businesses sharing skills and experiences. So that was one of the recommendations that came from that and one of the things that we're going to work with them to get those.
Okay, thank you.
Morrisburg Waterfront could be the same comments as the Iroquois Waterfront. Definitely two areas where we continue to want to have activity and input from and recommendations. And we can definitely look at their terms of, of at a future date. South Branch Community Fund. That's the Recreation Program Coordinator is our, is our resource. Volunteers are within the fund area. So that's at the, under the windmill areas where that committee is formed for the expenditure of those funds. Any questions or comments on that? Pretty self-explanatory and important committee to have. Tourism Advisory Committee, again, same folks as our Economic Development Officer and our CAO are on that. They meet quarterly. Heard some earlier comments. Any others to add tonight? Seeing none. Lastly, our Youth Advisory Committee, again, their staff resources are Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities. And that committee is to for youth engagement of community. Counselor Ward?
So I just had a comment. I really hope to see that this committee does really well. I think it's important for retaining our youth in our community that we really push this group forward and let the youth kind of shape how it, how it moves forward and how it grows as an advisory committee. So I'm really looking forward to that. That's, that's my only comment. I'm glad to see it on the list.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments about youth advisory? Counselor Smith?
Oh, yes. Through you, Mayor Broad. Shannon, how, it says under number of meetings, it just says NA. How often would this? How often, like, would they typically meet? Or is it like as needed or like, was there a regular schedule or?
Through you, Mayor Broad, to Counselor Smith. So this was one of the advisory groups that we did try and launch back, I want to say a year and a half, two years ago, but through COVID, it was a challenge in, in trying to meet with the students. And I think to Counselor Ward's point is, we deem this to be a very important committee in wanting to hear from our youth in our community. It was one thing that we were actually looking at the terms of reference of trying to shape it to make it a little bit more inviting to all ages, whether it's, you know, somebody in grade seven or eight, or somebody in high school, somebody that's may, may be away at school, but still have ties to the area. So it might be something that we want to look at is revising the terms of reference just to make it a little bit more inviting and kind of hitting maybe a reset or a relaunch of the youth advisory moving forward.
Thank you. CEO, Deputy Mayor St. Pierre?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Broad. Just notice the terms, I think it was 18 years and, and over. Maybe we need to bring that down a little bit, maybe 16, 15. I mean, you, you, by the time you get to 18, you're, you're kind of getting in that adult now and you're thinking university, college workforce. You know, so maybe just reducing the age a little bit would help attract more, more people to it. Thank you.
Cool. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Ward?
Additional as well, Mayor?
Sure. So, yeah. So those were the committees we currently have today. They are, are all in fact dissolved at this point, and we, it's up to us now to resolve new committees going forward. And our, and our plan was to bring forward any new thoughts, new committees, and then we can go out over the next few weeks, get the feedbacks from the current committee boards, and then come forward back with December with a proposed proposal, so we could then look for volunteers to kind of get things going into, into January. We could actually start the committee, select committees and start from them. So, yes, Counselor Ward, please share any, any other thoughts?
So I had two additional committees I'd like to counsel to perhaps entertain. The first, I think, a lot of us have discussed over the last few months with lots of our residents is the recreation, the formation of a recreation committee.
Yes.
It's in the master plan, so that's the first one I'd like to have examined. And then the second one is a little bit different. It's the Property Standards Committee, which instead of property standards issues coming to council, it would go to a committee of council to be discussed at, at that time, at that point. I think a lot of other neighboring municipalities have that. So I'm just wondering, it might be a question for the CAO, it might already exist. I'm not sure if it does or not.
Do we know for the, is this state?
Through you, through you, Mayor Broad, to Counselor Ward. Not something that has come up before, but I know we have recently just updated our property standards bylaws. So definitely if it's something that council wants to go in that direction as far as creating that committee that would review the application or the complaints, certainly staff would welcome that, that input.
Excellent. Yeah, so we can reach out to other municipalities, see what their terms of reference may be to get us started off. Good. Deputy Mayor St. Pierre?
Just to, Danielle, through you, Mayor Broad, I, I like Danielle, Counselor Ward's recommendation on a recreational committee. I'm not sold on a property standards committee, to be quite honest with you. I don't think having property owners on a committee dealing with complaints from other property owners is quite the way to, to, to do that. But I would be interested and open to seeing the reference to, to see if it's a, a benefit. But at this time, I, I don't know if I would support such a committee. I don't think that's the nature of our committees and the business we should be getting into.
Good. Thank you. Excellent comments, and we will do more research on that for sure. Counselor Smith?
Through you, Mayor Broad. Shannon, is there an agriculture committee?
No, through you, Mayor Broad, to Counselor Smith. No, there's, there's the DFA, but nothing as far as a committee of council through the agriculture.
Okay, alright. Any other questions, comments? Okay, well, it's going to, it will be exciting once we kind of get started with our committees of council and we start getting terms of reference and volunteers interested. So it'd be a challenge for us to continue to talk that with our constituents, our residents over the next few weeks. And then when we start to bring together the package for a future council meeting, let's be prepared and then we'll talk through and, and get these established and kicked off. Okay, moving on to item nine B, roundtable discussion on municipal election feedback. So we did have, obviously, feedback generated from the report, accessibility report that showed us how a lot of people, folks had voted in our, in our election. But we also had a feedback letter. Lots of us had received feedback verbally as well and through, through the clerk as well. So we did have some feedback that we wanted to address tonight, where some of the spaces we had used for votings were confined and people were interacting and, and talking during the event. And some folks had felt it wasn't as regulated or as proper that as it could be. So we wanted to accept that feedback tonight, and we have the letter and then address some of the concerns. Maybe we could start with Clerk Leslie Drennan. Did you want to add anything to any of the other feedbacks we've received?
No, thank you, Mayor Broad. And I too want to acknowledge the letter that was sent. I just want everyone to know in the public, although this was sent unanimously, or yes, that we do take these concerns very seriously, and we are documenting them all for future elections. So to this, I think the polls, and we also heard feedback that residents would like to see more, more polls on voting day, which is, which will just require more resources, which cost more money, but that's, you know, positive feedback of what people would like to see. We did also hear concerns with respect to the voters list, which unfortunately we don't have full control over. That is a resource that comes to us from MPAC. So we do internally try to update it as best we can before the voters, voter letters went out. There was some also concerns related to accessibility with regards to the voter letter itself with duplication of information and also with the ballots. I don't know if any of you did attend the polls where you saw the actual ballots. The script was very small font, I think less than 10 Arial. So anyone with visual impairments had a very difficult time seeing that. And because the ballots were tabulated, the ovals that you had to color in were very fine print, which was difficult for a lot of people to see. But I think I'll leave it at that, Mayor Broad, and I look forward to receiving feedback. And then we will also continue to receive feedback until the end of March through our website.
Thank you very much. That's why I think it's important for, for us as, as council that have received the feedback to share anything you, you may have heard and suggestions to improve. Certainly we'll then take these suggestions moving forward into 2025 when we do our budgets, thinking of the election in 2026. Have it documented tonight, and we can think about it then in three, three and a half years from now. So any other questions or comments? Counselor Smith?
Mayor Broad, through you, Mayor Broad, to Clerk Leslie. So two days after the election, I was around picking up my signs and I got flagged down by a gentleman on Irish Headline Road. This gentleman and his wife showed up to Matilda Hall to vote on Election Day, and of course it was closed. And he was very upset and drove back home. And I believe he did tell me that after an hour, I believe there was a call to the front desk here voicing his concerns. After an hour, he came to his senses and drove out here to Morrisburg to vote. He did inform me that two of his neighbors did the same as he did, but they did not drive to Morrisburg to vote. So three and a half years from now, I suggest that we look at more day of voting at all polling stations. That's my suggestion.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, I think that's clear message and that certainly input back to budgets. And that's something we will definitely be looking at and then potentially approving in the future. Yep. Excellent. Counselor Ward?
Comments? And actually, one of them is actually a question, Mayor, if you don't mind me asking a clerk. So through you, Mayor Broad, to the clerk. The MPAC information that is used to gather individuals residency information, is it accurate to say that it won't be available for the next election? They're no longer providing that information, correct?
Right. Through Mayor Broad to Counselor Ward, that is correct. They are looking for the 2026 election to actually streamline, to have one list for the whole province that would be used for federal, provincial and municipal elections. So we did send, following the election, we did send all the amendments that we made back to MPAC so that MPAC can use that data to assist with this formulation of a new voters list. But you're correct, the plan is to no longer use the MPAC.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mayor Broad. And then my only other comment. I, I do think the municipality did do a good job at allowing individuals to log into the system and alter their own residency information if it had changed. I would like perhaps to see in the future, if maybe we could start a little earlier, if we still have that ability with the new voter system. I don't know if it'll still exist with that provincial, federal ability. But it would be, my suggestion is just roll it out a little bit earlier to give people more time if they choose to do so. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, council. I would say to wrap up the discussion, we had 45% ish folks vote in our municipality, which was above quite a few others, so that was a good sign. But I think we should strive to do better and make it more accessible and more education and anything we can strive to in the future. So this council will look forward to the 2025 when we start to gear up for that election in 2026 to, to address the budget, address all the items that we've discussed tonight. And I want to thank the person that did send us the letter unanimously, or we will, unanimously, yeah, thank you. But we'll take that feedback for sure moving forward. Excellent. Moving to item 10. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, we'll move to item 11, ratification bylaw. So I have a motion that bylaw number 2022-129, being a bylaw to adopt, confirm and ratify matters dealt with resolution be read and passed in open council, signed and sealed. Have someone make the motion. Counselor Ward, seconded by Counselor Vino. All, have you heard the motion? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? And the last item is adjournment. The council now adjourned to meet the call of chair again. Have a motion by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Ward. All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Carried? As we conclude this council team meeting for the Masali South Dundas for November 28th, I'd like to say thanks to all of the South Dundas employees working in transportation, water and wastewater, recreation admin, and to our volunteer firefighters on behalf of the council team. Thanks to the staff that worked on preparing tonight's agenda items. Thanks to those staff members that are here tonight and that joined us via conference. Thanks to those in attendance, appreciate very much. And all those that invested their time with us online at tonight's council meeting. You may watch it as a recording in the future, so thank you very much. And lastly, I'd like to say thank you to all those connected to South Dundas. This team is proud to represent you. Good night.